Thanks so much, Steve. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the City Council's COVID-19 Response Committee, and I'll call the meeting to order at 4:30 PM. We're joined by the Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Helen Colton Harris. We're also joined by my colleague, Counselor Tim Allen, and Counselor Tracy Whitfield. And from various city departments, we also have Sandy Federico from Elder Affairs. We have Abby Skilicorn from Springfield Public Schools and Christina Maxwell from the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts. So what we are here to do is we're going to do two agenda items today. We're going to get our weekly briefing from the Commissioner, and then we're also going to discuss food access, which is something the President specifically asked us to cover in these committee briefings. And Commissioner, if you don't mind, I did receive a note from one of our attendees who has just wanted to make sure they could meet their childcare obligations. So I was wondering if you might mind if we just took that piece first, just to dispose of that item.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. So the first person we'll hear from before we do the briefing with the Commissioner will be Abby Skilicorn, who will be talking about the public schools' efforts to secure or ensure food security to students and families throughout the pandemic. So Abby, if you could just let us know how things have been going, and then we'll see if there's any questions from counselors.
Thank you, and thank you again for making accommodations for my childcare situation.
Certainly not a problem at all.
Snowy evening. So I am Abby Getman-Skilicorn from Springfield Public Schools Food Service. And as of yesterday evening, we've served over 5.7 million meals since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Yesterday, we served over 21,000 meals to students who really are relying on our school food service program that has been running without interruption. We're seeing consistently between 2,500 to, you know, 5,000 students on a regular, on a daily basis. And with those distributions, we're serving breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snack for seven days of the week. We have distributions on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 19 locations across the city of Springfield, including at Central High School on Friday, which we run in conjunction of our Friday distributions at Central in conjunction with Oasis Food Pantry. And we're serving tens of thousands of meals, sometimes over 100,000 meals on Fridays, just at Central High School alone. And as to, you know, the need, we certainly know that there are more families that we can be serving. We are continuing to try to improve outreach through social media metrics. We have launched our own Facebook and Instagram pages to highlight specific meal service updates for families. We have a texting service, so families can text to sign up to get updates about where we will have, you know, winter carnivals, fall festivals, summer barbecues. We've been doing them all since COVID started and are doing them as safely as we can while also trying to make the meal sites more inviting, so families feel like it's something that's worth getting out of the house for. They can get extra resource materials for their students when they come to a meal site. So we're not just providing food, but we've had book giveaways. There's been live music in the past. And right now, we're also hosting taste tests out of our food truck that we're hosting at a different school every day, every service day throughout the winter. Curious if there are any specific questions that I can respond to.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for that overview. Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Allen, did you have any specific questions for Abby about the public schools' efforts?
Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
Okay. The only thing that I've come across is the PEBT cards that are given to children that they either are remote learning or hybrid learning. And I know this because I have foster kids, like three of my brothers, four of my brother's kids, but three are in public schools, and they all got one. And so have you had anyone calling about the PEBT cards, asking what they are or anything like that?
Our department has been receiving calls about the PEBT cards. I have not been involved in those conversations, and I'm actually curious if Christina Maxwell might be someone who will better respond to that question, since the Food Bank is one of the state's SNAP outreach partners.
Okay.
All right. We'll make sure to circle back to that, Counselor Whitfield.
Okay.
Any, Counselor Whitfield, do you have anything further for Abby?
No. Thank you for all that you do, and the meals I know do help families. I didn't know, oh, I do have one question. I didn't know if there was a delivery service for them, for families that don't have transportation, and the locations to like pick up the food is like far from them?
So as of right now, and I actually wanted to circle back on one point that I didn't cover previously. The first short answer is the school district is providing transportation for meals to families that are, that have students enrolled in SPS but are living outside of the district, like our McInvento students. So for example, we are delivering through Vanpool meals to our homeless students that are living in shelters outside of Springfield. And we are also delivering to students who are in households where they're, we haven't, we have a known COVID-positive student. And we're working directly with PACE and with City Connect's coordinators about that. And the nursing department have been, have been working with the City Connect's coordinators there. As far as for families that have transportation challenges, we have done our best to have the 18 sites available so that they are, we understand that it's not perfect, but so that we do have sites open in all of the neighborhoods. And for example, you know, even in Mason Square, we opened up Dbury because there was a request to have more, you know, more locations available for the pedestrian traffic that is needed between schools like Brookings and Rebecca Johnson. We wanted to have another school that was open so families didn't have to walk as far as to get to Brookings or Rebecca. But if they have specific recommendations of other sites where, you know, neighborhoods that we really should reassess, we are absolutely willing to look into that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen?
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Counselor Letterman. Just a question about notification. As new people come into the school district or whatever changes are made to people where they live or whatever, are they, how do they get notified about if they're eligible, what they need to do to be eligible, and where they would go?
Sure. So we do work with PACE. So my understanding is that this information is being provided through PACE, and I can certainly follow up on that. The meals that we're providing are for anyone 18 or under, regardless of their enrollment in Springfield Public Schools. We try to be clear about that with our communication. So even if it is someone who is attending a charter school or, you know, a family member who might be enrolled in, you know, a school district, but they're doing remote learning from a house in Springfield, that student under the federal nutrition guidelines for the COVID waivers that we're currently running does allow us to serve meals to any student 18 or under. And we are trying to make that clear to the community.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Allen. We're also joined by Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, thank you for joining us. I think that you've provided a great overview. Abby, is it okay if we share, are you the best person for counselors to contact if they have general questions in the future about the school's meal program?
Yes, myself or Tim Gray, our food service administrator, who is unable to attend this evening.
Sure. Well, we appreciate, we very much appreciate you being available, and we'll share that contact info with the rest of our colleagues. But thank you so much for all the work that you and your team are doing. I mean, it really has been, you got off the ground very quickly in the beginning. And I think in the beginning, as we were sort of learning how to respond to the pandemic, the fact that the administration was able to move so swiftly with the public school district, you know, has definitely been a major safety net for a lot of families. So thank you so much for what you're doing, and we appreciate you joining us today.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Bye-bye. Thanks.
Thank you all for the accommodation. We want to make sure that we accommodate all of our working parents in the city of Springfield. And so we're going to return to our regular agenda, and we'll hear now from our Health Commissioner, Commissioner Colton Harris. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I think you're muted. Quote of the year on Zoom meetings.
Thank you, counselors. I am always happy to join and update you to the degree that I can. Again, my updates are usually given on Monday morning in a press conference with the mayor. And so much of what I am going to say to you, you have probably already heard or read. But in the update that I have for you, as you know, the month of November was a month where we had, we had cases that were really just very concerning. We had over 4,496 cases for the month of November, December, I'm sorry. In January, so far, there have been 3,346 cases. We are seeing a slight decrease in the cases in the city of Springfield. The week of January 3rd, there was 1,177 cases. And the week of January 10th, there was 1,043 cases. There were, that was a minus 134 cases from the week before. This week, 952. We had a negative of 91 cases. So again, we are going in the correct direction. As far as age groups are concerned, we know that 70% of our cases are under the age of 50, 30%. Under 30 was 41%, and under 50 was 29% for a 70%. 20, 30% of our cases were 51 and older. Far as zip codes in the city are concerned, 01101 had 1%, 032%, 0420%, 057%, 078%, 0820%, 0918%, 186%, 196%, 281%, 295%. And then 51 had 6% of the cases. Race and ethnicity, 7% Asian, 13% Black, African-American, 23% Latinx, 0% Native Hawaiian, 32% white, and 25% were unknown. The deaths in the city of Springfield stayed the same at 179. I can tell you that we have had at least, that number will increase in my next report next week by potentially eight or nine. At this point, I don't have the finalized number, but we will see an increase next week. 121 of our 179 cases were residential, meaning that they died at home. 58% 58 were long-term care, which means they died in a long-term care facility. An update, AMR tested 126,185 individuals. 53,953 of those were Springfield residents. We will be standing up with the collaboration of State Representative Bud L. Williams, a testing site in Mason Square. We will be standing up another testing site at Putnam. That is through the mayor. We're going to use CARES funding to do that because Springfield residents are talking about long lines at Eastfield Mall. And these testing sites will be for Springfield residents only. We had our second meeting of VACs Force today. We are moving forward with our specific committees for VACs Force, and we will be holding a town hall with VACs Force within a couple of weeks for the committee to introduce themselves and talk about the various areas that they are working in. If you recall, the areas, the subcommittees are healthcare clinicians, research, operations, education, faith, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those are the subcommittees that individuals on the task force have signed up for and will be reporting on. So we tested, I'm sorry, vaccinated 1,400 individuals in the greater Springfield area, the majority of whom were first responders. We did test individuals at Friends of the Homeless. This is staff only, not participants. Friends of the Homeless, Salvation Army. We did some court officers. We did limited, sorry, Hoyop Police Officers who requested. And we also expanded our services in other areas as well. We emailed, we had extra vaccine, and so we attempted to use all of our vaccine. An update I will give you that I have not had an opportunity to distribute widely is that we did have a positive case of a student athlete this past week. The sports season for right now has been shuttered until we do the testing of all of those school, all of those sports athletes who are involved right now. That testing will take place February 2nd at from 9 to 1. AMR will do the testing for us, so we will test, retest all student athletes. If you recall, we tested all student athletes prior to the sports season started. We tested 208 individuals. We had five positives come back at that time. We had planned to do the second testing on February the 3rd. However, I did get a phone call last evening from Ginny Clancy, Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martinez, and Duane Early, who is the athletic director, telling me that there was a positive case amongst a student athlete. And we immediately have moved to stand up a testing site February 2nd. We did not do it immediately because the individual came back positive on Friday. And so we wanted to make sure we were giving enough time to make sure we caught all positives in the event that someone does, another student athlete tests positive. So that is my update, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. If there's any questions, I know Counselor Whitfield, we'll start with Counselor Whitfield. If there are any other questions, just raise your hand in the queue. And we're also joined now by our colleague, Counselor Hurst, as well. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, for always being just very thorough. And I have been looking on the website and getting the information, so I'm glad that it's there and that I could refer people there. So I had a Mason Square C3 meeting today, and that was one of the questions. Will there be a testing site in Mason Square? And so you answered that one is being, you are getting one up and going in the Mason Square area. And also on that call was Dr. Cook from STCC, and he said he would be willing to have a testing site or a vaccine distribution site. And I don't know if you have control over where the vaccines are distributed. Do you have any oversight on that?
So thank you, Counselor Whitfield, and thank you for your support, and thank you for the work that you're doing as well. Very much appreciated. STCC, I'm, can you all hear me because I'm frozen? Oh, STCC did reach out to us. Springfield College has reached out to us. Western New England University is involved in VACs Force. And so we have had Zoom calls with them. We will look at their sites. And when we stand up more smaller clinics, we certainly will look at those possibilities. However, we do have the potential to have 10 schools that we can stand up because we have checked the air ventilation. We know that it's safe for people to go indoors. And so we will also work with the institutions of higher learning, but also keeping in mind that we do have access to school buildings that could certainly perform as vaccination sites as well.
Thank you. Do you have an estimated turnaround time on when the location will be ready to go in the Mason Square area?
We are meeting with AMR this week to look at several sites because it's important. The ventilation, as you know, is important. Access is going to be important. Parking's going to be important. Hopefully, we can bring closure to that this week. And once that happens, we'll be ready to announce when that site will go live.
Thank you. And last question, the 1,400 distribute vaccines that you distributed, was that at Eastfield Mall?
No, we did it at Bowlin School. We, and the site worked out very, very well in terms of parking and flow. So we did it at Bowlin School. That site was primarily for first responders. However, we did extend it to other areas, such as we did some dental programs. We also, as I said, did some congregate housing individuals as well, and some funeral directors as well.
Thank you. And I'm going to call you offline. I have something else I want to talk to you about as far as the vaccinations go.
Sure, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President, or Mr. Chair. The, my questions are kind of mainly about the vaccine and about kind of individual responsibility. Like, I know the testing, I heard what you said about the new testing places, et cetera. My question goes for testing and also for vaccines. I guess the first question is, is it, is it a kind of a bottom-up thing where people hear this from their friends, hear where these testing sites are, hear where their vaccine sites are, and go there on their own? Or is there a process somewhere where for people that might not be privy to that information or aware of that information, is there a, is there any other process for selecting people to know that it's their time to, that they're in the, they're qualified to go and get a vaccine? How does that work?
Yes, you can go on mass.gov. Mass.gov under vaccine will tell you where the sites are in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. As I know all of you are aware at this point, this Friday at Eastfield Mall, there will be a mass vaccination site that will be handled by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That site will be for individuals 75 and older. Individuals 65 and older will be the primary groups that are vaccinated first. It will then move into the next category. But to answer your question, mass.gov should have that information this Friday again. And I don't have any specific information around the state and Commonwealth's rollout. I do not know their sign-up process. I do not know how they are prioritizing. I know that people 75 and over with two comorbidities will not have to show any proof other than they will have to sign and attest to the fact that they have two comorbidities and they're over the age of 75. So there will not be any ID that's asked for or any doctor's notes that ask for. So 75 and over will be first, and then the next group will be 65 and over. Again, they will be asked to attest to their age and any health conditions, but there will not be documentation that will be required for them to be tested. They want to do, it's my understanding, they're wanting to do 15, 1,500 individuals initially, and they'd like to move up to 5,000 as the process moves forward. It is not a local group that is doing the vaccinations. It's my understanding that the state has hired an outside entity, although that is not confirmed. But I do know that for the most part, I don't believe that it'll be local individuals. I certainly know that AMR has not been reached out to by the Commonwealth to do testing. And so, but back to your original question, mass.gov should give you the testing site information.
Okay. And related to that is the, you know, so somebody hears about it, goes through and gets a vaccine on Friday. Do they go on a list for three weeks later or four weeks later, or is that just up to them? Whatever they're told that day, or are they told anything that day about a follow-up to second vaccine?
Yes. Individuals who go through and get the first dose are given a card with a date on it. That date tells you when the second dose is due. In addition, there is an email that is sent to individuals who are able to register through CrepeMog, telling them when that next dose is due. The Commonwealth has also said that, I know there are people worried about, is my next dose going to be there based on the rollout of vaccine and some concern about whether the second dose will be available? We have been assured that once an individual is vaccinated, that second dose is already put aside for the next vaccination.
Okay. Thank you. That's my questions for now, Jesse. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Commissioner, thank you so much. I just have a couple of questions for you. Relative to the site at the Eastfield Mall, I know we're still learning since the state is really running the operation there. And so do we know, though, will they be continuing the testing site at the Eastfield Mall at the same time as the vaccination site?
Yes. When the Commonwealth called to ask about Eastfield Mall, I should say that they did call to ask whether or not that site is something that we would not come out in oppose. So certainly, we are not in opposition to having a site in Springfield. But we also let them know that there is testing going on there that needed to continue. They said they understood that and that that would be taken into consideration.
All right, excellent. And do we know who is the, you know, who's, is there a point person for that site that we know of?
I do not have a point person. I know who I deal with at the state level. The calls that I have been on around vaccination site was Mary Lou Sutter's, the secretary. And so I'm not sure who is handling it locally as far as standing up the site and accountability. But I do think that we, I certainly will be going to the site to at least observe the process if I'm able to do that.
Yeah, I intend to make the, to make the same request, Commissioner, so I appreciate that. Relative to, and this again may fall more in the hands of the state, but if you're aware, maybe we can, we can start here. I know that we've played a role in vaccinating some congregate care employees. But do we, have we had any reports on the status of vaccination of congregate care, both senior, senior living and the local shelters? Do we know where they are with the vaccination of their population?
Well, you do know that long-term care facilities were done by the CVS. And so the state had a contract with CVS to do those long-term care facilities. It's my understanding that they are well through that process. As far as congregate individuals living, working, living in congregate shelter is concerned, I have spoken to the individuals at FOH, Friends of the Homeless, as well as the Rescue Mission. And so they are right now going through an assessment process of how many individuals they will want to take the vaccine. They do not, to my knowledge right now, and I think I can certainly check on that, have the vaccine in hand. And I'm not also sure who is doing the vaccination process. I certainly know that we are not. So I'm not sure who they are using, but they also have clinicians that work for both of those organizations.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. I did see your message. Thank you for joining us, and we understand that you have another meeting. So Commissioner, I just, yeah, I wanted to confirm that the shelters are not necessarily thinking that they are relying on us. They, they know they need to deal with the state relative to that. Is that accurate?
That's correct. When I reached out to, as you know, because we had some vaccine, when I reached out to the congregate living individuals, I clearly, we talked about doing their staff because they knew that the city was not going to be responsible for the broader population. So I'm pretty sure that they are aware of that, and I certainly haven't heard from them after that. So I'm, again, sure that they understood that we were not the primary vaccinators of those populations.
Okay. So we do, you know, I do think we have a vested interest in ensuring that those populations do receive the resources that they're entitled to under Phase 1. So hopefully, if the shelters are not hearing what they need to from the state, we might be able to interface at some level.
I think you bring up an excellent point. You know that one of the areas that all of us get concerned about is geographical disparity as far as the testing is concerned, and certainly as far as vaccinations are concerned. So I think all of us need to be mindful of that process and maybe make sure that there's equity and how the distributions are handled.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. We're going to get ready to move to our second phase on food security, but I just had two more questions, and sorry to And sorry to throw them all at you at once, Commissioner, but relative to the Putnam site, I know you said the Mason Square testing site was in the works. Do we have a date on Putnam?
Putnam is supposed to go live on February the third. Putnam will not go live on February the third because we need to now test those two hundred and eight student athletes. So we have shifted a bit just based on a need that we know is critical at this point. But I expect that Putnam will set up. Now, again, I haven't talked to AMR about doing, because remember, the student athletes are going to be February second. It's possible that AMR may say we can still do February third. I have not brought closure to that conversation yet.
And and my final question, just relative to our future vaccination plans, I know you've mentioned a couple of times in our committee relative to the ten sites that you hope to establish across the city. I know we all agree, we want to make sure that the vaccine is accessible to people in their neighborhoods, their communities, at least their zip code. Perhaps in a way that the state has not been able to provide testing in the way that we would have liked. What are we hearing from the state in terms of when they think we'll reach phase three, the general phase? And and the securing of enough vaccines to actually roll out that type of a setup?
So the general phase is supposed to start in April. It's supposed to be from April to June. The second phase is supposed to go from February to April. Also, I do know that because I was in a meeting with the mayor today with the Vax Force Committee, I know that the mayor has asked the governor, or at least expressed to the governor, that we would like to do more smaller sites in the city that's specific to Springfield residents. We are, Patrick Sullivan has sent me a list of sites, and we can have one in every zip code, in every neighborhood specifically. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to stand that up based on vaccine availability, but I know that the request has been made of the governor.
So are we are we really just waiting on the state to provide the doses? I mean, are we ready to stand up once the doses arrive?
Well, what we know is that next week, the beginning on the ninth, we're gonna have to do those fourteen hundred second doses. So we know that we have to do that. I think timing is going to be important for us as far as being able to do the fourteen hundred doses and making sure that we do have staff to stand up another site. But to answer your question, AMR, our vaccination partner, as well as all of the other individuals who are volunteer are ready when we are able to stand up additional sites. It may not be all ten at once. It may, they may come online differently. We may have to rotate neighborhoods. I'm not sure. We haven't talked about that. But yes, we are anxious to be able to provide vaccines to the residents of the city of Springfield.
And and final question on that, just are we thinking more phase two or phase three, being able to stand any of those up in the neighborhoods?
I think the pervasive need is going to be phase three when the general public. The I'm guessing that the Commonwealth is standing up the large vaccination sites to try to get to as many phase two. I think they'll keep that through phase three. But I think our goal with the Vax Force is to stand up in phase three when we go to the general public. However, that does not say we can't be, we can't support a phase two initiative.
All right, Commissioner, thank you so much. Just one more thing, not about vaccination, but I know we've been hearing a little bit about the variant. And I've been reading some some studies that have shown that they're encouraging people to double mask because the new variant is more contagious. Have we issued any advisories about that in terms of staying safe from the the various different forms essentially of the coronavirus that are now present in the United States?
We are using the same precautions or interventions that we did with the current variant. In talking to the infectious disease individuals, they believe that the vaccines that we have do do impact this current strain. And I guess there's two strains, two variants, one from the UK and one from the continent of Africa. The infectious disease individuals are saying that we should just continue being vigilant, that the vaccine is going to work. However, you know, because we didn't do longitudinal studies on the vaccine, I mean, I think that you know individuals vaccine is going to last in our bodies or whether or not we're going to need boosters at some point. And so there is a lot of conversation about not only the new variant, but making sure that we understand our ability to be protected against the current variant for a long period of time. So that's to say, there's so many unknowns, Councilor Letterman, and I think what we do know is that this virus is novel and we continue to learn new things, and I think that's going to continue to happen. Even though there will be, it's not unusual for viruses to go through changes as far as variants are concerned. It happened with HIV/AIDS, but this is new. I mean, and I think we're going to see some shifts in, just as we have in the past with this novel COVID nineteen virus.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Those are all my questions for the day. Councilor Hurst, Councilor Edwards, and Councilor Allen, do you have any further questions for the Commissioner? I haven't seen any hands in the queue, so I assumed folks were all set, but just to
I'm all right for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the second half, we wanted to return back to our brief overview on on food resources available. Again, this was something the president had asked that we cover in the committee, and so we wanted to have some some testimony today and some folks present to inform councillors about the different resources available. We have already heard from the public schools. But I'd like to introduce Christina Maxwell from the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts to talk a little bit about their work. I know you've all been, well, you're always active in our community, but have been especially active in the response since the beginning of the pandemic. I appreciate that we had Andrew on the town hall that we did last year. And so if you could just share with us some of the efforts in Springfield and and what councillors need to know.
I'd be happy to. Thank you so much for having me. So just to give you a quick overview, the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts, we're located in Hatfield, but we serve all of Western Massachusetts. And we operate kind of as a hub for the Emergency Food Network, a distribution center. So we have member agencies, of which we have sixty-five in Springfield. So those are food pantries, meal sites, brown bag distributions for seniors. We also have some mobile food banks. So all of those together, we have sixty-five in the city of Springfield. Just to give you an idea about the scale of the issue that we've been dealing with since COVID started. In FY twenty, we distributed thirty-eight percent more meals in terms of food, thirty-eight percent more pounds than we had the year before. And we served ninety-five percent more people than we had the year before. So Springfield, as I do not need to tell you, has been hit hard by this pandemic. And food insecurity has really been a problem. The number of individuals in Springfield who we serve each month immediately went up from March to April last year. As soon as the pandemic hit, we had been serving approximately twenty-three thousand people a month in Springfield, and that went right up to forty-two thousand a month, give or take, and has stayed at that level ever since. The number of children that we're serving in Springfield specifically has gone up. Children were making up a quarter of the people who we were serving, and now they're making up thirty percent of the people that we're serving. So that has gone up a bit also, although we do know that food insecurity among children across the Commonwealth has increased nearly a hundred percent. So it's been quite stark. We also do SNAP application assistance with folks. We had to, we normally do that in person at various sites throughout the community, but we're not able to do that right now. So we're doing that over the phone. We can submit applications over the phone with people. Last year, we did six hundred and ninety-one applications in for Springfield residents specifically. And we continue to work the the largest chunk of applications that we submit on behalf of people are for Springfield residents. One other thing that we've done to try to support our member agencies in Springfield, because this has been a really challenging time for them as well, excuse me, is that we've been giving out capacity grants to our agencies so that they can purchase things that they need. So we always give out capacity grants. We do it every year, and those are usually used for purchase of refrigerators and freezers and occasionally shelving units. And but this past year, due to some grants that we received, we were able to give out much more in the way of grants than we normally can. And those were used not only to purchase refrigeration and cooling equipment, but also outdoor tents, outdoor heaters, tables to be used outdoors, because a lot of our pantries and meal sites are now distributing outdoors. And they continue to do that throughout the winter in an effort to keep everybody safe. They also needed to buy cleaning supplies and masks and gloves and all the things to keep people safe. So we were able to give a lot of the agencies in Springfield some money to help them do that, which I think has been supportive to them. One of our agencies had built a little outdoor structure. I'm not sure if they're gonna keep that after the pandemic goes away or not, but they've got a little wooden structure now out in their parking lot. So agencies have been extremely creative. They're working very, very hard to get food out to the residents of Springfield, but it has not been an easy time for them. Councilor Whitfield had to leave before I was able to tell her about pandemic EBT, though I did give her my phone number, so I hope she'll follow up with me. But just so that you're aware, students who attend Springfield Public Schools are entitled to a pandemic EBT benefit. This is a federal benefit that's being administered by the Department of Transitional Assistance at the state level. And it is intended to make up for the school meals that students are missing if they're working remotely. Springfield students are lucky enough to have the food service that that they have, and they're getting those meals as well. But none there's an EBT, which comes in the form of an EBT card. And those benefits have been distributed. They were distributed last spring. And then the wintertime benefits have been distributed through December. And GTA is continuing to distribute those. President Biden just increased the amount of those benefits, I believe, by fifteen percent. So people will be seeing slightly more on those cards. Those cards should automatically go to people. They don't have to register or request anything. It is a little bit confusing for people because once they get a card, they have to register it and assign a PIN number to it. And sometimes that's not very clear. So we have been getting a lot of calls from people asking for some help how to do that, and there are some good resources available. So when I'm done, I'll just put a link in the chat for all of you to have in case you get questions about that. And I'm also gonna put a link in the chat to our website, which has on it an up to date list of all of the pantries and meal sites that are open, their hours, it's searchable by zip code. So if you have folks asking you where they can access some free groceries or a prepared meal, you could look on that website for them.
Excellent.
I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Absolutely. If councillors have questions for Ms. Maxwell, if you could just raise your hand in the queue. And I was just wondering, do you know for that pandemic EBT benefit, do you know how much it is per student? Is it uniform?
It's not uniform. It was last spring, but now they're giving more for students who are fully remote and slightly less for students who are in a hybrid situation. I believe that the larger amount is approximately five dollars a day. But that's an approximation.
Is that distributed on the cards all at once, or is it like a monthly?
It's distributed monthly.
Excellent. And do you have the number that folks can call you at for assistance with that and for the SNAP applications?
Absolutely. Our SNAP department has a direct line. So that number is four one three nine nine two six two zero four. And those folks, they'll need to leave a message and they'll get a call back within a day for help with that. Our general phone number is two four seven nine seven three eight. If people have internet access, I would really recommend them looking on our website right now. It's easier to get through frankly than it is on the phone, but we will get back to you via the phone. And that's how they could reach that list of member agencies that are currently open and operating, which are almost all of them. And I did also want to mention that a few of the member agencies in Springfield are doing delivery for people who are not able to leave their homes.
Your website's fantastic. I think I have your website embedded in my resource list, so that's fantastic. Councilor Allen, did you have your hand up previously? Are you ready? Do you have a question?
Was that to me?
Your hand was up, Councilor Allen. I didn't know if it was up from before or if you had an additional question.
That was from before. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Maxwell. That's a really helpful overview, and we'll be able to share that and send that out with our colleagues. We're also sharing all of these videos with our local neighborhood councils and civic associations sending those out as well. So hopefully, we can include all this information in those updates, and we really appreciate you spending some time with us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm leaving you with the website for pandemic EBT so that you, there's really good information on there that can guide families through getting their cards set up to use. So I'm putting that in the chat for you.
And before you leave, Ms. Maxwell, I would just ask you if you have any, if you don't, if you're not totally sure right off the top of your head, you can feel free to reach back out to me, but is there anything that the city council can do to to support what the food bank is doing right now? Whether that's advocating at the state level around resources, or next week we'll be meeting with the offices from our federal delegation. So is there anything specific that we can we can raise on your behalf as we're talking with those decision makers?
Yes, and I will get back in touch with you for some more information. But we are requesting, we get some of our food from the state through the Massachusetts Emergency Food Assistance Program. Our legislature this year was very generous and increased the allotment that we get for that food. And so we're asking them to keep that higher allotment for us this year. I'll get you the details of that.
Excellent. Yep, we can definitely sign on to a letter around that. And two of our colleagues just joined the the Massachusetts Legislature, Councilor Gomez and Councilor Ramos. So we'll definitely share that with them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And you all should be in in touch with me if you have further questions.
Thank you so much. And we saved the best for last, our Director of Elder Affairs, Cindy Catarico. Thank you so much for for joining us. And I appreciate you taking my email over the weekend. I know that that your department has been doing a lot of one-on-one work with seniors throughout the pandemic from the beginning. I know you also have some food resources, so we just wanted to hear from you as well relative to to the services you've all been providing, and of course, any way that we can be of assistance. And I know Councilor Allen has a meeting coming up. We're very grateful. Our president has put an emphasis on on elder affairs once again, so welcome. How are you doing?
Thank you. We're crazy. Thank you. You know, this all started, our journey started when the pandemic hit and we closed our centers. That initiated a response on our part to reach out to all of our seniors. We have a robocall system in place where we can automatically call everyone who's a member of any of the senior centers in the city, and that's been really, really helpful. But we initially took the time to call them individually. We divided up the list, which is about three thousand seniors, and called them, and we had created a survey to test their emotional thermometers as well as their needs in terms of medications, groceries, and food in the house. Once we got that data back, we analyzed it, and the two things that slapped us across the face were food deprivation and also social isolation. So we tried to combine the two by developing a food program where we could get them deliveries to their homes seven days a week, two meals a day. And that is currently what we are still doing. And that is currently what we are still doing. We are upwards of serving just over 48,000 seniors, which is tremendous. To combat the other side of that coin and satisfy some of that social isolation, we are, we've all made handmade cards, inspirational sayings, affirmations that we tack in with their lunches. So every day when the seniors open their lunches, the surprise is not just what they've got to eat for that day, but also what, what, what did our friends at Elder Affairs send us? We thought that would just be a cool way to keep in touch when we couldn't see them. And then after that, we developed some kind of programming where we've got drive-by parades, where they come through and we are hand, so it was a chance for them to see us and for us to see them. And we've got themes and everything, but we're giving out resources for them at all of these parades, which is all about COVID, including food. We've partnered with the food bank. We've done brown bag. We've continued with that. We did CISA partnership, Greater Springfield Senior Services, and the USDA has given us boxes of food that we've also handed out. We've done 10 pound, five pound, 10 pound, and 30 pound boxes of food, free of charge, for all of our seniors to hand out whenever they send them to us. It's been a tremendous ride, and we're still seeking to, to just do as much as we can for them. It's extraordinary times, and I've charged my, my DEA family with being extraordinary to meet that, that challenge. And so we continue to fight the fight, if you will.
Certainly. For the, the Meal Delivery Weekly, how, how can seniors get in touch with Elder Affairs to sign up for that?
They can just call our main number, which is 787-6785, and they are doing it. We are increasing as we go. They can. We also put that information in our newsletter, and word of mouth has been probably our, our biggest companion throughout all of this. You know, my neighbor's getting this, so-and-so on the third floor is getting this. And so, so we've, we've kind of broadened our spectrum, if you will, and we're accommodating everyone that calls.
Excellent. Is there any charge associated with that?
No.
Great. Who's doing the meal prep?
Right now, we have Palazzo Cafe.
Oh, great.
And they are doing it, which is nice. It's all made fresh daily.
Absolutely. I, I used to eat lunch there all the time.
Yeah. I think a lot of us.
My office. Absolutely. Very good. That's excellent. That's great. Well, thank, that's a, that's fantastic to hear. Counselor Allen, did you have any questions or Counselor Edwards for Sandy?
No, it's good to hear what she said. That's what we'll be talking about tomorrow, some of that at, at the Elder Affairs meeting, as I catch up on all this stuff. And you know, it's, in the, in the past week, I've seen the personal experiences from people I know pursuing the vaccine and on individual initiative, and not really sure what the rules of the road are and that sort of thing. And I'm curious tomorrow, Sandy, when we talk, you know, what your plans are for helping people get the vaccine and how I can help that, or how this committee can help that, that sort of thing. So.
That's going to be really critical. The challenge is that we're, our phones are literally ringing off the hook about this vaccine. We're trying to dispel a lot of the myths, and, and some of these parades and drive-by events, that's some of the information. I think I kind of indicated that a minute ago, that we're handing out information from Health and Human Services that's accurate, factual, and helpful. And what we're doing is trying to get them to breathe. They all want it yesterday. They want to know, you know, why they're not getting it, this, you know, and the news is, is kind of advertising that these things are available, so they want to know why they're not a priority. And so allaying fears, reassuring them, and asking for patience. I always tell our seniors that any information we give is going to be factual and not hearsay. So if they wait for it, they'll be getting the proper information. But the challenge is going to be to register for the vaccine, to be honest with you. Many of our seniors are not good, or don't have, you know, they may have an iPhone, or they don't have, you know, the internet at home. And I know that's for the most part how you have to register. So I have volunteered to the commissioner that our, our team at Elder Affairs would be happy to step up and do some of that for them. What that's going to look like, we're still working out.
That's good. It's a good thought, and hopefully we can work out the details.
Yes.
Because that's been my concern. That's why I, the question I had earlier in this meeting was individual initiative, or, you know, what, how do we make sure people are getting it? And some people don't have the technology or the inkling, or are just intimidated by how to, how to go about it.
And some of them are homebound and incapacitated, so even if they have the technology, they can't manipulate a phone or a computer to do the necessary registration. So these are the, the concerns. And I've raised them to the commissioner and Solo Dennis as well, and so we're, we're talking.
Okay, good.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Allen. And I, you know, I absolutely agree. I think that's, I think really get, you know, I think that the idea that people are seeing on the news that the phases are moving through, but being, being somewhat confused about how to actually access it. And relative to the mass site, you know, I've, I've looked at, just in doing my own research, some of the, the other two mass vaccination sites that already seem to be stood up, and it is all very internet-based, you know. And so unless, I know for some of our seniors, some of our seniors are extremely tech savvy, but some may not be and don't have access to it. So, you know, unless they have family members willing to assist, which for some is not the case. So I think Elder Affairs playing a, a role in that is, is critical, and I'm sure you'll address that in, in Counsel Allen's committee. And when we have future meetings, also focus specifically on the vaccine with the commissioner involved as well. So if there's no further questions for the director, Director, you always know where to find us if we can be of assistance. And please share our, our thanks to your entire team. I, I definitely missed doing my ice cream social this year.
We missed you too.
Usually I do my, my, my ice cream tour of the senior centers, but hopefully, once we get through this, round the corner, we'll be, be able to be back with that and, and spend some more time. Thank you all for joining us today. And next Tuesday, as I mentioned, we're in communication with Senator Markey's office, Senator Markey's office and Congressman Neal's office with an invitation to join us. Senator Markey's office has confirmed. And we're also reaching out to Senator Warren's office. We'll have the federal delegation represented next week. Thank you all so much, and have a great evening.